Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the regular City Council meeting of August 2nd, 2021. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Haquez.
Here.
Councilmember Reed, absent. Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Here.
Mayor Smith, absent.
I'd like to invite you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and do we have any citizens here that would like to speak to council tonight? Seeing none. Do we have any announcements from City Council members? Amy, did you have something? Oh, Tim.
I just wanted to say a quick thank you to Roa Gorge Rio, Fremont Community Foundation, and Canyon City Chamber of Commerce for doing a fantastic job on the Whitewater Festival. You guys did a fantastic job. Friday night was really rough with that rainstorm, but you guys put on a fantastic festival, and I just want to say thank you.
I do have a quick one.
Sure.
We are going to be having an informal meeting on Tuesday, August 10th at 9:00 a.m. to discuss the legalization of UTVs.
And that we will be receiving announcements on that agenda, is that correct?
I believe so, is that correct?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Oh, the announcement, I just announced the meeting on the 10th at 9:00 a.m.
Yeah, we'll be doing that work session with the UTV representatives, and then we'll bring something back to City Council as a whole after we've worked through the details.
And I'm not sure if Mandy's going to be back, Tim, so do you want to plan on accompanying me?
She had said that she would be attending the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other announcements? I do want to announce that we have the General Government Committee meeting August 4th at 5:00 p.m. in these chambers, followed by the Urban Renewal Meeting, which I believe is at 6:00 p.m., even though the agenda says 5:00. 6:00 p.m. here. And in addition, this is our, the first Wednesday of the month, and so we have KRLN coming up. And I believe, Amy, you're going to be doing that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, and if anyone would like to join me, I'd love to have somebody on the radio with me Wednesday morning, 8:30. Let me know.
Was Ashley planning on being there for that? Oh, okay, all right. The, I'm scheduled to be on at 9:00, but I can probably show up for, at 8:30 for, you can, good, all right, great, good. So you'll have some moral support anyway.
Wonderful.
Okay. We'll now move to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Hammack, members of council. Item 6A is bid 4121, Catamount Hammerhead Pneumatic Mole. 6B awards bid 4021 for a new John Deere tractor. 6C receives and files a list of bills, and staff is going to ask that 6D be removed from the agenda. The organizer of the event has stated he'd like to be here to present to council, so we're going to schedule that for the next City Council meeting.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda with the removal of item 6D.
Mayor Pro Tim, I'd like to move that we approve the agenda and consent agenda with the removal of item 6D.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez. She disappeared.
Appears to have dropped off.
Councilmember Haquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye.
And now we move to item 7, the City Administrator's Report.
Thank you again. You have the Administrator Reports in front of you, it's a rather lengthy report, I'm not going to go through all of that. Happy to take any questions. One thing I do want to add to the report that is not in the report is that tomorrow election materials will be available for the municipal election, so those can be obtained through the City Clerk's office.
Thank you for that. Yes, Amy.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I just wanted to commend the Building Department. I noticed in your report that we have reclaimed, or they have reclaimed, the ISO rating that was lost in 2016 due to old building codes, and that their current rating is a four, and lower being better, and that that's the best rating that the city has ever received, and I just, I'd like to commend them for the hard work that they've done to accomplish that.
I would appreciate that very much, and it's also a testament to council for the work supporting, going through updating building codes, and much like what we're going to be considering tonight, the UDC, you know, these processes take a lot of time, and staff cannot do it without the support of councils, thank you.
Yes, Frank.
Yeah, I just want one question to ask with regards to the gasoline deals at the entrance to the old Skyline Steel.
Yes, sir.
I noticed that there's a mention of negotiation to try to work out a land swap or something else. Have we set any kind of a deadline with regards to that? Because that's been, in my opinion, what I feel would be one of the biggest stumbling blocks to get investors to want to come in and invest in the property that we purchased, which has a lot of potential. So my question is, have we set some kind of a deadline with regards to the negotiations to get this thing going? I hate to say when we're negotiating, and then six months later, we're still negotiating. So, I'm not trying to rush the situation, but we've been in that situation for well over a year, and I hate to see us continue to be in that position.
Yes, sir. We don't have a hard deadline at this point, but Rick Harmon, our Economic Development Manager, and I have been talking about that, and we're going to be getting closer, and we can set a hard deadline, and happy to do that.
Brandon.
I just, I wanted to just put it on record, because I've had a number of people ask me about the progress of Orchard, and how far out we are on that. Is there any estimation?
With the 2A construction?
Yeah, yeah.
I believe the original work order, you know, had the project finishing in September, October.
Okay, great.
You know, it's still a ways out.
Well, that at least gives me a basis to where I can answer some of those questions, thank you.
Yeah. You know, much like with, you know, the project over on Ninth Street with a lot of the rains and delays in work because of the weather, we may add days to the end of that contract because of some of the weather considerations, so don't be, don't be surprised if that is the case.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? And that concludes the Administrator's Report then. And next on our agenda is a public hearing for the first reading and adoption, by title only, of Public Hearing Ordinance 20 of 2021 Draft Unified Development Code. Hereby open the public meeting. And Mr. Stevens, staff, do you have a report for us?
Yeah, before Patrick kicks it off, you know, this, this is the culmination of all the hard work over the last year to, you know, rewrite Titles 16 and 17 of the municipal code, and it piggybacks on the comprehensive plan work that we just completed, and with that, I will turn it over to Patrick to give his staff report.
So, before I reintroduce our consultant, John House, here, we do have a presentation, if you'd like to see it, but I kind of wanted to start off by casting your memories back to November of 2019. We had just adopted the new riverfront zoning standards. We had also gone through a rather painful process associated with the Scholastica property rezoning and the minor subdivision, and I believe at the time, Councilmember, it was Councilmember Haquez who said, "We really need to do something about this code. This code is confusing, it has mushroomed itself into existence, we have got to do something to get ourselves in control of this code." And that gave us the impetus at the beginning of 2020 to go through the process of putting out a bid, getting proposals, and updating not only our comprehensive plan, but our land development code, in order to make them consistent and reflective with each other. And so what you're seeing tonight is the first reading of the last half of this project, that would be the UDC. And what we have done is fold into it all of our zoning, subdivision, and site plan standards into one chapter of the municipal code. We're essentially going to be extinguishing the contents of Titles 16 and Titles 18, and this is, I mean, we're getting a code that is much more user-friendly, it has much more appeal to the layperson who may not be familiar with land development and the processes for land development. It is a much more comprehensible document, it is much more graphic, graphically oriented, and it's organized a lot better so that it's easier to find things. So with that in mind, and the fact that we began this process of iteratively going with Joint Planning Commission and City Council meetings to walk through these code updates, or these chapters of these code updates, beginning in February, we're now at the point where we've got the finished document, and it's before you this evening as an ordinance. And I believe Catherine has structured the ordinance such that we will also have a resolution going to Planning Commission to repeal Appendix A to Title 16, which is our subdivision standards. That will go at the Planning Commission's August meeting later this month, and then all of these ordinances that what we're doing will become formally effective as of September 1st, beginning of next month. So with that, let me turn it over to John, and you can let us know if you would like to see the formal presentation, or if you would just like us to jump in with answering questions that you may have.
Council, some sense on, would you like to hear the formal presentation?
Sure.
I think it would benefit for our latest member of council for that purpose.
Sure.
That looks like a yes. All right, well, Patrick gets us, we thought you might, but we weren't sure, so we put one together, it's the same one we gave to the Plan Commission, so we just wanted to get it on the record, pretty straightforward. I think the main thing to keep in mind before we kick this off is, as Patrick just said, and as all you are aware from having worked with us so closely over the course of the last year, to do both the comprehensive plan and the UDO, or UDC, we've really, I think, endeavored in this ordinance to create a document that is reflective of national best practices. This is the very best of what zoning is doing across the country. Having said that, it's been specifically calibrated for Canyon City. This isn't just what other people are doing, but we wanted to see what the best practices were, but there were several points here where, when we were kicking around it during the discussion phases, it just didn't work for Canyon City. So, we've eliminated some districts, we created some new districts, we recalibrated other districts, we wrote standards for driveway servicing that worked here that might not work in other places, but we wanted to make sure that first and foremost, it was Canyon City's code and not someplace else. So, that is throughout this document through and through. So with that, we'll sort of jump through this, and again, this is a very, it'll get it on the record, but this sort of lays out for anybody who might be watching what we're going to do. So we'll go through a quick project overview. I can try to do it if you want. Oh, there we go. So again, it was a comprehensive plan and the update to the development code, were both done sort of at the same time to make sure that as we went through these, they really dovetailed. The most powerful enforcement tool the city has for its comprehensive plan is its zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations, so we made sure about that. So again, you're very familiar with the scope of work for the comprehensive plan, there were several steps that were undertaken, and the development regulations, there were primarily two steps, but these really ran parallel to several components of the comprehensive plan. This process was not sequential, they were developed alongside one another as we went through this, so we could make sure that when plan policy and vision and recommendations were being developed alongside of that, and at the same time, code was being written to specifically allow the city to implement this plan through development. So what's been done so far, in October, the diagnostic report presentation was made to the Plan Commission and City Council, and December, there were preliminary recommendations, and this was where we thought the code had to begin to rewrite the way the city approached certain things. Some parts of what you had worked well, and we didn't want to reinvent the wheel for the sake of reinventing the wheel. If it worked well and it wasn't broken, we didn't attempt to fix it. Other chapters needed to be completely rewritten or reorganized. So in March, we went through draft chapters 1 through 5, and we worked through that again with the Plan Commission, staff, and City Council. In May of this year, we went through chapters 6 and 12, and had an overview presentation, but it was a pretty meaty content in this section, so we actually broke this deliverable into two different meetings, and we did this both in May and in June, and broke chapters 6 through 12 into two different meetings with the Plan Commission and City Council. We conducted a lot of outreach throughout the process, some of the key issues we heard regarding zoning and subdivision regulations were, your existing ordinance was not necessarily easy to use, you had definitions embedded in the regulations, you had regulations embedded into the definitions, the structure of the ordinance itself was not exactly user-friendly. Development standards and regulations, these are the things that affect regardless of district. So parking standards were excessive and didn't make a lot of sense, a lot of your stormwater regulations weren't as what they should be in your subdivision code, and there's a lot of inflexibility that increased the cost of development in town, sort of unnecessarily, not necessarily resulting in better development, but resulting in more cost to the developer or the property owner. We then looked at specific district regulations, there were a lot of inconsistencies in some of the different districts, there were too few commercial districts relative to what the plan was trying to accomplish from a development perspective in the new comprehensive plan, and some of the residential development around your downtown was lacking the ability to provide some of the housing variety that the market and the residents were clamoring for, to meet the needs of the current population and your projected population growth and aging population going forward. Your permit decision-making process was a little bit cumbersome, as was some of the lack of clarity in your plan development ordinances, and how different-sized developments were processes, either plan development within the underlying district, or rezoned for as a PDO, which is a planned development overlay district, so we had to take a look at those as well. So the basic structure of the code was these three different, 13 different chapters, and within these, the ones you see in bold are the ones that we spent most of the time on, really rewriting, recalibrating, and coming up with new amendments. So, general provisions, the riverfront districts we did not touch for the most part, nonconformities, vested rights, and definitions. While we tweaked these where we needed to, this wasn't the substantial bulk of the amendments. Most of the other ones were establishment of districts and district-specific standards, use-specific standards, development standards, signs, plan development, subdivision regulations, and zoning standards. Establishment of districts, two new districts were created, we created a neighborhood commercial district and a business park district. This dovetails with some of the land use recommendations in the comprehensive plan. There are characteristically some specific types of development the city indicated they would like to see, and that there was a strong market for, but there were no districts in your zoning ordinance to accommodate that type of development. So in order to accommodate the plan recommendations and the vision for the city, we had to create two new districts, and again, neighborhood, commercial, and business park. We had to clean up some of the plan development language, we have a plan development district, or plan development, then you have plan development overlay district, and there was a lot of ambiguity and confusion as to when developers should be applying for one and not the other, and when the procedures and regulations for one apply to your property, but maybe didn't apply in another situation, it wasn't clear. So we really worked a lot with Ryan and Patrick, and with Catherine, to get that figured out. And then the existing district that we did eliminate was the TMU, the Transitional Mixed Use Overlay District, just wasn't necessary, wasn't utilized currently, so we got rid of it. The other thing that we did that I think was, is a game changer going forward in terms of ease of use and application, is every district now has a purpose and intent statement. So like in the comprehensive plan, you read single-family, mixed-residential, neighborhood commercial, the first thing you do is you say, "What is this? What is this district about? What are we trying to accomplish here?" So for each of your zoning districts, existing or new, we said, "This is the purpose of this district, this is the intent of this district, this is what we want the development and character to be like in these zoned areas." Your code before was sort of lacking in some of that, so we wrote purpose and intent statements for all your new districts. Basic district standards were clarified throughout, we did a lot of GIS analysis to figure out what rightsizing of some of your districts were, for instance, in the table you see there, your existing was a 6,000-square-foot minimum requirement in some of your districts, and single-family detached. We looked at, looking at what would it be like if it was 5,500 square feet, and then 5,000 square feet, and realized that with 5,000 square feet as an example, you had 8% of your lots were nonconforming. Under your current code, 25%, a quarter of your lots didn't meet the minimum standard, and that puts a lot of onus on your property owners for variations, to have a legal nonconforming status on your property. So again, we went through all your districts and sort of right-sized your code to your existing neighborhoods and your existing districts to make it better for those that are here already, as well as coming up with new standards for development we want to see going forward in the future. Zoning ordinances have to work for what you have and what you want, not just what you want, so we had to fix that in all your different districts. Use-specific standards are standards that have a level of specificity for, depending on the use, it's not just district-specific, so mobile home parks, kennels, accessory dwelling units, and we took a look at things like community gardens, multifamily dwellings, artisan manufacturing, solar energy collection systems. These types of provisions are allowed in different areas of your city, but if you're going to do these uses, there are specific regulations for these types of uses regardless of what district they are in. So they're not district-specific uses, these are use-specific standards, and we need to bring these online as well, sort of, to bring them up into sort of more contemporary standards. The other thing we did was development standards. Development standards, again, they're not necessarily district-specific, a driveway is a driveway, what are the standards that govern that? A fence is a fence, what are the standards that govern that? What's lighting? Lighting exists all over regardless of district, lighting exists throughout the city, what kind of standards would govern lighting regulations? So we looked at all these different things, parking, surfaces, landscaping, lighting, bicycle parking, pedestrian circulation, and regardless of district, how are these uses treated when development happens in town? So no matter where you are, what district you're in, you know development is happening at high quality, the way it should, and not governed solely by the district in which it is located. The other thing that sort of, you begin to see with these slides, and if you look at the draft code online, is we, it was a very graphic-rich document, and this is very important, if we can graphically communicate, you shouldn't need an attorney to interpret all aspects of the zoning ordinance, but zoning can be pretty complex, so the key is to try to make sure the language is concise and easy to use, that tables are easy to follow, and that graphics can visually depict a definition or a standard in conjunction with text. So you'll see here, part of making this, as Patrick said, more user-friendly, was embedding graphics and illustrations anywhere we possibly could. We also took a look at your sign standards, there were a lot of things we took a look at. What really predicated the drive to look at your sign codes among just signage's changing is the Supreme Court decision Reed v. Gilbert in 2016 Supreme Court case changed the way, the legal footing in which cities could regulate signage, and you can't regulate signage based on content, and some of your regulations were content-based, so we had to look at your sign code, and when we did that, we took a look a lot, a lot of the other things that sign codes have to regulate now and tweak them. We were still very business-friendly, it's not overly onerous, the business community should be thrilled with the sign package, as should the city, it'll allow businesses to thrive and begin to improve the appearance of some of your commercial industrial areas without limiting the ability of businesses to have the signage they need, both functionally as well as in terms of advertising or naming. Plan development standards, this is one of the things we really had to work with Catherine on, as well as staff, to delineate between a plan development district and a plan development overlay district. Plan development overlay district has a larger trigger, larger properties in question, and the underlying zoning does not stay in place. A plan development district, the underlying zoning is sort of is the governing rule for development that comes out of the ground, they have similar but different processes and different triggering mechanisms which guide when you can, by option, select one of these, and when you have to select one of these as a means for development approval. And it's typically the larger, more complex properties when they come in for development, or the ones that sort of mandate a higher level of creativity in terms of their approach. So we were able to get this cleaned up. Subdivision standards, again, we went through these and cleaned them up, your subdivision regulations on a lot of fronts were very good, but we went through and cleaned them up to make them a lot more concise, easy to understand, and in line with the comprehensive plan and the growth areas. And then zoning standards that we went through here for administrative review and allowances for temporary use permits, rebuild letters, administrative exceptions, conditional use permits, and site plan review. A lot of the initial Plan Commission and City Council feedback that we got was integrated as we got it, we then took it back to our shop, worked with staff to integrate all the feedback we got from Plan Commission and City Council into the process. These are some of the things that we did. Standards for food trucks, maximum sign areas for monument signs, gravel surface, material for residential driveways, barbed wire in agricultural areas, plan development districts versus the overlay trigger, what size would trigger, which type of review and entitlement process, temporary signage, and then sign types, and then web-based public notices. These were all things that, again, what we brought forth was our understanding of the city, what we thought would work best, and these were all things that got completely retooled or recalibrated based on City Council and Plan Commission and/or public feedback. This is part of that sort of Canyon City calibrating, to make sure that regardless of what other cities did, we wanted to do what worked best for here. These are some of the areas that we ended up changing based off of those working meetings. So again, that's a very brief overview, but it sort of drills into what our approach was to undertaking the UDC, the areas that we really focused on, and some of the highlights of what begins to differentiate your new code versus the one you have on the books now. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Patrick, and we're available for any questions. So, at this point, any questions from council? The, I did, I did go through, just so you know, my previous comments, and reviewed the new document against those comments, and so I do, I do have additional comments that we, that we need to note, and the, we probably want to do that after we close the public hearing, would that be correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So any, any questions right now on, on the process? I would like to say that, that, you know, City Council had a vision that, that, that we needed a new master plan, our old one, you know, from the 90s, the, it turned out the city did not even have a copy of it, we had to go to our previous mayor to get a copy of the master plan. The, although it had been revised, but the original underlying base document was, was missing from our files. But, but the, when, as we went through the selection process for contractors, I had some reservations about the process that Haseel Levine outlined to us in the, in our discussions with the various, you know, contractors or proposers, but having gone through the process, this, this, I think it, I don't know how it could have worked better for Canyon City. The, the inclusion of some of the flow charts in our, in our, in this unified development code is absolutely stunning, and absolutely makes it so that it is easy to understand, you know, a driving force that council has
You know, a driving force that council has tried to, or lodestar that council has tried to touch on is to make things simple, understandable, and business-friendly. And I think that we've, with this code and these standards, that we have achieved that. Any other?
I definitely echo everything you just said. I'm sorry, Dolly, go ahead.
No, I just don't have a button, so it's hard. Brandon, go ahead. I'll talk after you.
I definitely echo everything that Mayor Protam Hammerick has said. I started this venture on Planning Commission, and we went through the River Zones, and then I was elected to council. So this has kind of been something that has went with me since the beginning of my tenure here. So thank you so much.
You bet. Dolly?
Thank you. I would also like to commend, I just want to say that I've seen an enormous amount of work go into this plan, and I can appreciate the amount of time and effort that was put into it. And to develop this plan was, it couldn't have been more unique to our community, even down to, like he had mentioned earlier, driveways and sidewalks and signs. I just want to commend the whole team on working so hard at all of the whole community's tough requests.
Thank you, Dolly.
Thank you.
Yes, Frank?
I want to mention one thing here. Through this whole process, we've killed a lot of trees to get a lot of material out and everything else. You know, it's been a lot of work on everybody's part and everything else. The next thing, the next hope that I have is we've got something here that can really help the future of Canyon City. Now, the tough job now begins with regards to those investors that want to come here and look at investing in Canyon City, have something valuable to look at and work with, you know? It's not something they say, well, can this happen here? Can that happen there? You know, we've got a real good contents of different things that they can look at. And hopefully, they'll see that what this council and the other councils members have done to present this final phase in here is now worthwhile, and they'll say, okay, this is a city that wants to be progressive in how they look at attracting business and community development and people to come here, not only just to come and visit, but to want to come here and retire and stay and become part of our community. So everybody that's been involved with this project, I want to give my kudos to each and every one of you wherever you're at, okay? Just remember that. It takes more than one person to accomplish the goals that have been done here. Everybody has worked diligently hard to get this going, not only City Council, but the Planning Commission and all the other folks that have been involved in it. So thanks to each and every one of you.
Thank you, Frank. Yes, John?
I was gonna say, Mayor Protam Hammerick, if I could real quick, I'd be remiss if I didn't, I'm a firm believer in giving credit where credit is due. You know, one of the greatest points of pride when you own a company is your employees. And Josh Kuntz was the project manager for the comprehensive plan portion, and Josh did a fantastic job with the comprehensive plan. And Jackie Wells spearheaded for our team from Hossil Levine, the zoning ordinance, the UDC effort on our side, working really closely with Patrick and Catherine. So I just want to officially acknowledge Jackie Wells as being the project manager for the zoning component. I think she did a fantastic job, if I do say so myself. She's a real asset to the team. So I just wanted to put it out there, so.
And we appreciate their patience every time we had some off-the-wall request.
And I would say that they were indeed assets in this process, and, you know, please convey our thanks to them and gratitude to them for the job that they have done, because it really is quite a good job. By the way, did I understand you to say that the inclusion of graphics and flow charts made it so that even an attorney could understand? Is that what?
We're hoping so.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak on this issue? So hearing none and seeing no other comments, we'll close this public hearing. And I think now we can actually move to the review of the document. Would someone like to start? I actually have a lot of comments, but.
I have a lot as well. I guess one thing that would be really helpful for me to understand is just where our legal team is with their review of it and their understanding of kind of how it all fits together now, if you guys have had a chance to do that, and kind of where we stand with regard to the current document.
So as I relate to you, we've had the chance to review it as a whole, which is a really important review for us, one time, between when Planning Commission had it and you have it tonight. We have not had the opportunity to review the document that came back after a very lengthy conversation we had with Patrick and Jackie. So we haven't had that opportunity, and that's just where we are. I will say, I suspect the document is very close, you know, and there is some reality that you could review it forever and find issues. And that's part of the reason why I relate to you, like, there will likely be a cleanup ordinance or two that will come. That's very common. One, because you miss things, and two, because once you start using it, you might find little things you're like, ah, that doesn't quite work. Now that we're putting that into practice, it doesn't quite work. So it's extremely common for that to happen. So that's where we are. Whenever the moment is right, I do have some amendments to discuss with you regarding the document you have in front of you tonight. So I can do that whenever. And I can also go over the ordinance, which amends other areas of the code as well with you, whenever you're ready for that.
Well, Catherine, what would you suggest in terms of reviewing your suggestions?
I can do it now, if you'd like, if that's easiest.
Sure.
Okay. So as I mentioned, there were some kind of ghost references to an Appendix A, and that Appendix A was going to be the submittal requirement. So when anyone filed an application, it would be a list of the submittal requirements. That document is going to exist, but it's going to exist outside the code. It's going to be an administrative document. So I've already asked Jackie to go through and remove those, so she's ready to make that change. If you, when you approve the ordinance tonight, approve that change as well. And then one of the other changes is we are shifting the Board of Adjustment, which was in Title 17 or currently is in Title 17, hanging out by itself when all your other boards and commissions are in Title II. So removing that, but I would like to keep the Board of Adjustment processes, variances and appeals in Title 17. And I sent you some of that draft language, and that's been shared with Jackie as well. And then one last thing that I just want to make sure we get your direction on and your blessing is a big organizational issue. You may have noticed through the processes that there were some repeat sections. One of the two prominent ones are notice and development agreements. And it's perfectly fine to have repeat sections. And as I fully admit, it may be more user-friendly, rather than having someone who's doing one permitting process, and then they have to go find the notice section somewhere else, and it's all within that section. So if I'm doing a use-by-special review, I have one section with everything in it. But we just want you to be aware that that makes the code less concise and condensed, and so it's really just a matter of personal preference. So not a legal issue, there's nothing legally wrong, although the city just has to remember if they change one section, they have to change the others. So that's just a little key there. And then, as I provided you with a memo regarding the definition of art, this had come up, I think, in the last joint session with Planning Commission and council, and a desire to not regulate art. Well, that's a really tricky area. And the definition of art in the UDC is potentially content-based, based upon the case law. And also, when I read it, I don't know how I would necessarily help staff apply it. It's very subjective. And so with those two issues, we're suggesting maybe you regulate art as just any other kind of sign, so that you remove that kind of content-based issue, or you simply just, you know, define art without that content-subjective language, and you can exclude it from, exempt it from the sign regulations that way. Typically, what we see in definitions of works of art or art is really a focus on murals and the painting on the side of a building, less about freestanding art and those kinds of objects. So that's kind of something to consider and think about. That definition just kind of makes me, and its regulation makes me just a little bit uncomfortable, so.
This is where, if I can, one of those things where calibrating the Canyon City was a challenge. A lot of sign ordinances say you cannot paint a sign directly on a building. And so that's how they get around the whole mural thing. They just don't allow them. It's part of who you guys are. You've got some pretty cool ones, you've got some other ones that might not be as liked, but you've got a bunch, and I don't think the city was ready to say no more. So it's, it is content, so it's a tough thing to regulate. But we didn't want to have an ordinance that made the murals you do have non-conforming, I guess is the best way to put it. That was a challenge, so.
Yeah, it's actually very, I mean, I don't know how it is in other states, but it's pretty common in Colorado to have those murals on, especially in the historic downtown areas. You know, some of them are, you know, from centuries ago, you know, commercial, you know, advertising a product that no longer exists on the market and that kind of thing. So, yeah, I don't want to suggest maybe getting rid of them, but just maybe revising that definition to make it less content-based and less objectionable and subjective, so.
Okay.
That's it.
I'd like to take a step back right now because of something that you just said. And perhaps the lens that we need to look at what we're doing here tonight is the fact that if we recommend, you know, certain language changes, specific language changes in the document, those all have to be incorporated into the motion. And so because of that fact, you know, maybe the better way to do it, and this is a question, I guess, for you, Catherine, is maybe the better way to do it is kind of get it in a RADA sheet, because there are typos or some things have been dropped out, I think, in the final document that were not intended to be dropped out, things like that, that if we gather all those together, rather than try to, you know, grind our way through them and then have a motion that reflects all of that, would be really, really tough. And so maybe with that, you know, thinking about what we're doing here tonight in those terms, any questions or comments from council?
I think, real quick, aside from procedural maneuvering, that's a very helpful way to do it, sort of a punch list, you know, like when you're having a contractor do something. It's your last punch list before your inspection. And maybe it adds another meeting, I don't know, but it's, I think it's time well spent and allow us to have the diligence with Catherine and Patrick and others to make sure we get this as dialed in as we possibly can. I think Catherine makes another good point. Once you adopt an ordinance, you're kidding yourself if you think you got it exactly right. Once you start using it, you'll find little things that you want to tweak. So the year after an ordinance gets done, we usually recommend staff do a thing called roundtable text amendments, where over the course of the year, they just keep track of stuff, like this is a little problematic, or this doesn't whatever. And then after six months of the year, they come back and say, these are little things we should do just to clean it up. It's a given. But I think a master punch list, for lack of a better term, would be very helpful.
I agree with that, absolutely, Councilman John. And especially right now, I'll be honest, I've read a ton of this. I didn't get through it all. I just had a busy weekend, and, you know, I was out working all weekend. Time-wise, I did not have as much time as I would have liked to to get all the way through everything on this, so.
Okay. Any other comments? I'm just kind of paging through some of my comments here to see if there are any kind of deal breakers that I've identified, and I don't believe I really have any. They're all things that could be addressed in a punch list, I'm pretty sure. So Ryan?
The one thing I want to point out too is this, when we're talking about where we're going to be down the roadway with the final thing. Right now, we have council members here that look at what's been presented to us that we're kind of, in a sense, okay with that. And then the comments that's been made down the roadway, something may come up that may require a little bit tweaking. And where I bring that point in is this: This council is not going to be here forever, okay? So we change, we have the opportunity to change the council every two years. And so we may have other people that come in, and hopefully, they will get all this information that we have before us now, and then there may be something that may come up with them. So it's one of those things that we need to look at. This is never an ending, ending solution, okay? It never is, okay? Just like the Constitution is never an ending situation, depending on what people want to bring up. So I look at it this way: Do we have before us what we're comfortable with to continue? And then, as Catherine mentioned, picking some things up and kind of consolidate them for where we can go on. And I'm comfortable with that type of a situation with regards to what has been accomplished so far and what we're looking in the future.
Councilman Hockes, I would say that we're, as staff, are comfortable with what's been presented to you, and I personally believe what we have presented before you now is better than what we have now. And this is a good step forward towards accomplishing our comprehensive plan and our goals for the future.
Better by miles. Amy?
Thanks. I think that was a really eloquent way to sum it up, Councilmember Hockes and Administrator Stevens. I'd also just like to recognize Director Mulready. Thank you for all of the work that you've done on this, and thank you for your patience with all of our many, many little tiny script changes. I do have loads of those in a couple of places where it looks like it's inconsistent between different chapters. I think the signs allowable versus permitting is a great example, where we've changed it in one, but maybe not in the other. And I think it's a great reminder to us of the burden that we will face moving forward by having, you know, places where it's repeated. But I agree with Catherine, your point, that it makes sense to have it repeated so that folks, it's as easy to use as possible for everyone else. And then just to summarize my comments, I would love to contribute to that master punch list, and I think that that makes a lot of sense, because we do want to get it as dialed in as we possibly can before we approve it. But we also don't want to take too long to approve it. We need to move it forward and understand that there will continue to be changes as we go along. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan?
I was actually going to say a little bit of what Councilmember Schmisher was going to say, or said regarding Catherine's comments around procedures showing up in multiple places. As staff, we feel that that is the most, you know, user-friendly approach to have it in multiple places, so they're not flipping back and forth between the document.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? And Dolly, did you have anything that you would like to say?
No, thank you. I said what I wanted to say in my appreciation. I read through it, and I think it all looks really great after several changes that we've gone through. So thank you.
Thank you, Dolly. And with that, I'd like to ask for a motion. Brandon?
So if I can, just really quick, so just so I understand the plan. You're going to consider this on first reading as is. We're going to make the punch list, and all of those are going to come back on second reading. Is that, everybody's nodding their head? Okay. Just really quickly, did you have any questions on the actual ordinance document that went with it?
I did not.
No? Okay, just a second.
And the ordinance has to reflect the amendment for Appendix A? Or the motion?
Not Appendix. Oh, no, the ordinance does not address Appendix A or anything like that. Yeah, the ordinance doesn't address any of the things I talked about earlier.
That will be one of the corrections.
That will be one of the corrections within the text of the UDC that comes back to you at second reading.
So, using this punch list approach, it can be just a straight motion. There doesn't have to be any amendments to the motion or amendments to the documents.
Correct. There will be amendments to the motion on second reading.
Yes.
Mayor Pro, Mayor Pro Tem and Council, I move to approve the ordinance number 20, series of 2021, on first reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there some comments?
I just wanted to, following up on Catherine's question, clarify if we wanted to have an internal deadline to submit things for that punch list, if we just went to consider them on August 16th.
Well...
I would say...
It's not a comment on the motion, though.
I couldn't hear what she said.
So, the comment was, should we have a deadline of when to make sure, when we should have punch list comments into staff, so that they can be included in the next version that we see?
When does it plan to come for second reading?
August 16th.
Ooh. That's tight.
Well, the other way to look at it is...
Is a week enough time?
The other way to look at it, Dolly, is that we have had this document for a couple of days now. The, you know, reading it, from my perspective, reading, rereading the whole thing would really be a challenge. But I did go through, in all of my previous comments, I did review each of those comments, and then the new document against those comments, to see if they were incorporated or not, or how they were resolved. And so, that's, those are really going to be my punch list, is there's just some typo-type things and little RADA-type things.
So, we actually have a motion on the floor for the approval of the ordinance. I think we should take care of that and then talk about our internal deadline, if that's all right, Mayor Pro.
Sure, that would be the right way to do it. So, we do have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye. Thank you.
So, I just want to put this out there. We need to give Jackie time to create the document that you want to see. And also, there may be, you know, she may have gotten direction from me that may be conflicts with one of your comments or something like that, so we may need to sit down with her. I don't want to, I want to give her the time to do the work that she does. And so, I would say no later than, like, Thursday.
I will serve as the clearinghouse for comments, that I can then forward on to both Catherine and Jackie.
That sounds fine. I forgot, I actually have all my comments noted, and I can just hand the document over to you. And...
How about Monday? Monday? Okay.
First thing Monday mornings? Can we say Sunday?
Sunday evening by five.
No. I will spend the 24 hours of Sunday making all of my typo-stenographer changes and Monday morning editing them.
Okay, so we've had a motion and a roll call on our public hearing. Now, we have a second reading and adoption by title only of Ordinance 19, series of 2021, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Amending Sections 3.13.040 and 3.13.060 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Use Tax on Construction Materials." Mr. Stevens, do you have a report?
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack, this is a second reading. We have not received any additional public comments, and staff recommends approval on second reading.
Thank you, and I'm open to a motion.
Mayor Pro Tim, I'd like to make a motion that we approve on second reading the ordinance number 19, series of 2021.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Aye. Thank you, Council. The motion has passed. And now, we move to a 9B on our agenda, second reading and adoption by the title only of Ordinance 22, series of 2021, entitled Charter Communications Franchise Agreement. Mr. Stevens.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tim Hammack, again, we have not had any additional public comments on this ordinance, but I do know that you had a couple of questions or suggestions, and I did present those to Catherine earlier. But I don't know if you want to mention your comments before a council, so they know what those suggestions were?
Sure. The, so, what I'm going to be proposing, I believe, is that, in the franchise, there's a list of, and I don't have that in front of me, but there's a list of different conditions that where the cable company would be required to take action. And that would, and the action is considered relocation. And some of those actions include where the city would ask the cable company to relocate would be because of traffic conditions, public safety, street abandonment, freeway and street construction, change of establishment of street sewers, excuse me, of street sewers, drains, gas, or water pipes, or any other types or types of structures or improvements by the franchising authority, meaning the city. And as I reviewed this, it seemed to me that there was one category that was not included that I felt would be appropriate to include. I realize that this is coming in at a late hour, that we are on second reading of this, but I think it's a, something that deserves at least our consideration. And that would be that in that paragraph there, I would recommend that we add, let me read it again with the addition, by reason of, relocation requested by reason of traffic conditions, public safety, street abandonment, freeway, and street construction. And I would recommend adding a new category, pole abandonment. And then, it goes on to say, change of establishment of street grade, et cetera, et cetera. And the issue is, is that the, there, most of the service in the city are cable services and our electric services and our telephone services are co-located on poles. And when, the issue is that when the electric company deems a pole unsafe, they replace it, but since the franchise cable company is paying rent on a pole, they're not obligated to remove their service from that abandoned pole. And so, you end up with orphaned poles, you can end up with orphaned poles throughout the city. And so, that is the reason that I think that it would be appropriate to include a pole abandonment category as a reason to request relocation of services from one pole to another, and it would be the case of pole abandonment. Any comment on that from our attorney, or?
Well, so, my initial reaction, because I just had your writing, was that the public safety in that sentence, so by reason of traffic conditions or public safety, covered that, because if the pole's being abandoned because it's dangerous, or it's a public safety issue, then, you know, I think that's covered. In addition, in that last sentence in that paragraph, it talks about the removal for installation or repair of public facilities and structures. And I think that, like, Black Hills would be covered by that of those public facilities. So, but I believe the charter representative is here, and if he wants to come, I don't want to put him on the spot, but if he wanted to comment on that change, because charter does have to approve this, and the document you have in front of you is the one that charter has at least verbally said okay to.
Any changes to that, at this point, would have to go through our legal counsel.
Yep.
And that would be expected, yes.
But I would agree with you that I think that language does cover it. I mean, your general police powers are preserved in the document.
Right.
Of public safety.
I'm not terribly concerned about that issue.
Okay. The, my thinking on it was that, rather than arguing about whether a particular pole was safe or not, that is, can be subjective, and it may involve, you know, requesting information from a third party that they may be, you know, loathe to provide for different reasons, but...
I mean, it's ultimately council's pleasure. My suggestion is, is that if you do want to consider that change, that we table second reading, so that charter and their legal counsel have an opportunity to review that, and we don't have to bring a new franchise agreement all the way through the process again.
Thank you for that. The, on my particular issue, the, I think you've convinced me that we have sufficient authority. I just felt it might be better to call that out, and at this late date, I'm not considering making a motion for inclusion of language. Any other discussion by council? Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Just to echo my comments at first reading, while I certainly support public television and commend the city for the planned improvements on sharing information with the public, I do not and cannot support raising the fees that are passed on to consumers. So, I realize that it's relatively de minimis, that it's a relatively small amount of money, and I'm confident that we could find that money elsewhere in our budget if we wanted to. So, I just, I don't support raising fees on consumers through franchise agreements. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Schmisher. Any other, any other comments? So, the subject is on the table. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Smith.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack and Council, I move to approve ordinance number 22, series of 2021, on second reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Nay.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Nay.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack. We don't have a mayor.
Well, then, the motion wasn't successful.
So, the motion fails.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that, you know, considering Councilmember Schmisher's comments, that perhaps if the franchise is brought back without the additional fee, that council may have a different result in voting.
Well, then, you'll need to table second reading or vote to deny the ordinance on second reading.
Say that again, please, I tried to hear the last part.
You'll need to table second reading, so we can bring it back with potentially an amendment to the franchise fee, or you'll need to vote it down on second reading. Right now, we're kind of in a limbo.
So, do I have a motion? The motion would be to table. Yes, yes. Go ahead, Dolly.
I, okay, can I make a motion?
Sure.
On one of those? I make a motion that we table ordinance number 2020, series of 2021, on second reading.
To August, can I amend your motion, Dolly, really quick, to August 16th?
Yes, 16th.
Yeah, thank you.
Second.
So, we have a motion and second to table the second reading of the ordinance until August 16th. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
No.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
The motion to table has passed. Administrator Stevens.
Yeah, just so I am clear and have direction, are we saying no to replacing the PEG fee, or are we saying no to anything above replacing the PEG fee?
I would say, from my perspective at least, as long as the fees that are being passed on to the consumers remain the same, that I don't have any issue with how they are labeled. I think I understood from Mr. Yee and from the conversation at the last city council meeting, that he was amenable to half percent fee. So, and I believe I understood from that conversation that a 3.5 percent fee would be the same as replacing the PEG fee. But please correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I will double-check the numbers, but, yeah, we can, we'll take a look at that.
So, the, to summarize, and please jump in if I get this wrong, if we receive a revenue-neutral version of the franchise, where we're neither increasing or decreasing our revenues, it sounds like we'll have a different result.
Okay.
Is that fair? Well, with that, is there any other business to come before the council? And we are adjourned.